Good evening and welcome to the Coon Rapids City Council Meeting for Tuesday, November 18th, 2025. If you could please join us and rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's call the roll.
Councilmember Grisgoviac.
Here.
Councilmember Butler.
Here.
Councilmember Novak.
Here.
Councilmember Geisler.
Here.
Councilmember Armstrong. Councilmember Carlson.
Here.
Mayor Cook.
Here.
One absent Armstrong.
All right, thank you. Why don't we start by adopting this evening's agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, a second by Butler. Any discussion or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and the agenda is adopted. We're going to start with a proclamation for Small Business Saturday. Small Business Saturday is a day dedicated to supporting small business that are the backbone of our communities. Now, I'm not going to read any more of this because I'm pretty sure it's going to be in the proclamation. Anything that's not, we'll come back and cover it. Got a proclamation for Small Business Saturday. Whereas the government of Coon Rapids, Minnesota celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community, and whereas Small Business Saturday founded in 2010 is a national day dedicated to supporting the diverse and vibrant small businesses that are the backbone of our communities, creating jobs and boosting the local economy. And whereas Small Business Saturday falls between the major shopping days of Black Friday and Cyber Monday, providing a specific opportunity to spotlight the importance of locally owned and independent businesses that help make our community unique and prosperous. And whereas these businesses embody the American spirit of entrepreneurship, ingenuity, and resilience, and their success is vital to the health and character of our community. And whereas in 2024, U.S. consumers spent an estimated $22 billion at independent retailers and restaurants on Small Business Saturday, demonstrating a strong commitment to supporting local economies. And whereas Coon Rapids, Minnesota supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities. And whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, I, Jerry Cook, Mayor of the City of Coon Rapids, on behalf of the city council and citizens of our city officially proclaim November 29th, 2025 as Small Business Saturday in the City of Coon Rapids and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year proclaimed this 18th day of November, 2025. That did cover all the little details, didn't it? Yeah, that's a, that's a very important day. It's, every day is a great day to support local business, but it's nice that we call out Small Business Saturday to really promote that. Item number two this evening is to approve the minutes from the November 4th meeting.
Motion to approve the minutes, Mr. Mayor?
Second.
Motion by Carlson and a second by Butler. Is there any discussion or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed?
Abstain.
Yep, there we go. Motion carries, one abstention, Councilmember Novak. We have three items. No, I'm sorry. We have one item on our consent agenda. We have three under Old Business, just in case you're reading ahead. We have one item under a consent agenda, and that is to receive the schedule of electronic payments. Minnesota statute requires that a list of transactions made by electronic funds transfer be provided to the city council at the next regular city council meeting after the transaction. So we are looking to receive the schedule of electronic payments from October 30th, 2025 through November 12th, 2025, and that is the consent agenda.
Move approval of the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion by Geisler and a second by Butler. Is there discussion or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. Under Old Business, item four is to, this is an introduction of an ordinance amending Chapter 8-100, adopt, ordinance 2355, amending 8-500 and adopting ordinance 2336, amending sections 8-903, 8-904, and 8-905. Mr. Brody, are you doing this one?
I can do this. I think Mr. Brown had done the initial introduction. We are asking that you adopt the ordinances, the 8-500 and the 8-900, but asking that you reintroduce 8-100, as we did make some changes to it after a previous discussion. We just wanted to clarify slaughtering and processing for home use. And so it's also got kind of a companion language in the, in the bird ordinance that's coming to you a little bit later tonight. So we just asked that you'd introduce that one. Again, it's kind of updating outdated language and we're consolidating some of the property maintenance, taking it out of Chapter 12 and putting it here to make it easier for our residents and for staff.
But this, this whole one is just an introduction though, right?
Correct. 8-100 is just an introduction because we did make some changes since the introduction last time.
Okay.
So it's a reintroduction.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions of Mr. Brody?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Butler?
Just to clarify, so that means we can do one motion for the three ordinances that we are adopting? Or would you suggest that we, or excuse me?
We typically don't motion in the introduction. The mayor just sort of declares it introduced, and then we would need motions to adopt the other two.
Okay.
And authorize summary publication. Yeah, if that makes sense.
Okay, thank you.
I think that kind of was your question.
Yeah. Yeah, just wanted to make sure I clarified that.
All right. So does anybody have any questions of Chapter 8-100 first? If not, we will consider the ordinance amending Chapter 8-100 introduced. And.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Butler.
I move that we adopt ordinance 2335, amending Title 8-500, Maintenance of Vegetation and Landscaping, and also adopt ordinance 2336, amending sections 8-903, 8-904, and 8-905, Storage of Wood, and authorize the summary publication.
Second.
Motion by Butler and a second by Geisler. Is there a discussion on this? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. Item five is to consider adoption of an ordinance that we introduced last time. This is ordinance 2339, Restricting Parking on 109th Avenue. The council member for this ward is unable to be here this evening. I would encourage us to table this until he gets back.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Novak?
Move to table item five.
Second.
Motion by Novak, second by Carlson to table item five. Should we just say through the next meeting? Would that be the motion?
Yeah, Mayor Council, I mean, I would suggest perhaps there might even be a need to discuss it a little bit, so.
So just, just leave the motion the way it was. We'll just table it.
Yeah.
And we'll look at it.
My, my guess is no later than the second meeting in December it would come back, but if, if council wants a opportunity to chat about it, our best chance to do that would be December 9th.
Perfect.
Work session.
Perfect. I realize that was far too much discussion for.
Yep.
No discussion motion, but. We have a motion and a second to table. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and that motion is tabled. Item six is to consider a reintroduction and adopt ordinances amending city code Chapters 13-200, 13-300, 13-400, 13-500, and 13-600. Mr. Hammer, anything?
Mr. Mayor, I was hoping I could defer to Mr. Brody. He did such a great job on number four.
I could do it.
It's very comparable, so I'm happy to do so, or I can answer your questions or present.
Then you should have gotten his name on it though. Does anybody have any questions of Mr. Hammer on, on this?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Grisgoviac?
I, uh, my computer went dead on me, but I was looking over this earlier. Which one of the chapters here addresses tractor trailers? Is that in one of these?
That was in the, should have been in the last one.
Oh, that was in.
Code enforcement.
That's in 8-100, which we just introduced, so you'd have a chance to.
Okay. Well, I'll ask my question at a later date then, because it's, time has passed on that one.
Yeah.
And if I may, Mr. Mayor, just briefly, it, this is Chapter 13. We've talked about it numerous times. We introduced it the last meeting. We workshopped section 200 to take out the surface water pumping language and updated that one. So we're reintroducing 13-200 and adopting 300, 400, 500, and 600. And the changes that were part of the introduction are outlined in, in the memo.
All right. So let me just ask a question, because as I was reading through it, under 13-221, Emergency Conditions and Procedures, there are some allowable restrictions, 13 under 13-222, and the following restrictions, or any combination thereof, may be imposed: A ban on lawn and garden sprinkling, period. To me, we know that we're not going to regulate the surface water. The state controls the surface water. But when you impose a citywide ban on land and garden sprinkling, doesn't that imply? I'm just curious. Does it, does it infer that, is that everything, or is it exclude those?
Are you, are you referring to the pumping?
I'm referring to the surface water, the surface water. Yes. Yes, pumping.
Because we could, we could exclude the use of irrigation from domestic supply that's coming off your home, that's treated water coming through the city's plant. Separate from that is the surface water, which again, the, the state has the control over, the minimum flows within those bodies of water. So both of them could potentially be on the table, but one does not necessarily mean the other.
Okay, so 13, 13 lists a potential ban on pumping from regulated waters of the state. So does that mean that that's separate water? Water that's being pumped from regulated waters of the state is for sure separate for when we do a ban on lawn and garden sprinkling? Mr. Brody, now I would like to.
I understand what you're saying, because a ban on lawn, and I think our intention would be that would not include if you were.
I understand, I understand what our intentions are.
And that, that would be our interpretation, is that, I believe I would defer to Mr. Hammer if he thinks otherwise, but that if we really wanted to, if we banned the pumping of additional, or pumping from regulated waters, obviously that would end the lawn and gardening sprinkling for that particular use. So I don't think it was our intent to have them to include that with, if you were pumping from, from the regulated waters of the state. I mean, that's my understanding, or would have been.
Okay, as long as that's listed as a separate item, that should show the intention then.
And frankly, we could clarify that if we do issue a particular order to make sure that the, when we, if we do issue an, an order under this, a declaration, that we would clarify that as well within that order.
I'm thinking, I'm thinking council's 10 years out from now, you know, how are they going to do this? But, all right. Does anybody else have any concerns or?
Mr. Mayor, I mean, I, I think the, the staff's intent there, I think we could probably beat this up on specific language probably forever if we really wanted to.
Well, I don't want to.
Yeah, well, and, you know, to what, to what extent is lawn and gardening sprinkling and irrigation separate from each other? You know, they are, they aren't. I, I, I think, to me, my interpretation of it, it sounds like staff's interpretation is if you're pumping water out, it's, it's got to go somewhere. If it's coming out of your sprinkler hazard, if it's coming out of somewhere else, okay. But I think the intent here that, like, and you could even say limitation on times of water usage. I think that's meant to imply city-connected water usage versus any water usage. So I, I do think there's an intent here. I do like Mr. Brody's suggestion of if a ban were to be issued, that we be specific and give guidance of what we mean beyond, you know, when we say we're, this time, this is what we mean. When we say these days, this is what we mean. So, you know, I, I do like that we've pivoted to focusing on the DNR's language of Waters of the State, focusing on their specific guidance, because the DNR also just gives guidance saying, you know, if you don't have to, please don't, but we're not going to say no at certain times when it slows down, but it may not be emergency levels. And I think we should pass that on as well, as even if we're doing an uneven ban, to just remind folks to be cognizant of if they're pumping out of other waters to be, be aware of how dry or how, well, their impact to the local environment, so. I, I'm comfortable with it. It, it, could it be better? Sure. Is it perfect? I don't think every, any ordinance is ever perfect.
Yeah.
So.
Ms. Lenz, Mayor, can we just make sure that's in the minutes?
We will.
All right. Okay, any, any other questions on this? All right, so let's see. What do we have to, we have to reintroduce?
13-200.
13-200?
Yeah.
Okay, there we go. All right. So if there's no more questions on 13-200, we will consider Chapter 13-200, Municipal Water System and Connections, reintroduced or introduced.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Carlson?
Make a motion to adopt the following ordinances. Mr. Brody, is this okay to do in one line?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2341, repeal in its entirety and add Chapter 13-300, Municipal Water Rates, Charges, and Collections. Ordinance 2342, amending Chapter 13-400, Sewer Code General. Ordinance number 2343, amending Chapter 13-500, On-Site Sewage Treatment System Regulations. Ordinance 2344, amending Chapter 13-600, Public Sewer Connections, and authorize summary publication.
Second.
Motion by Carlson and a second by Butler. Is there discussion on this?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Grisgoviac?
I just want to make a point on this one and on number four. It seems a little confusing when we consider an introduction of an ordinance amending and then adopt ordinance, all kind of in the same motion. It gets a little convoluted for me, so. I would just like to see us maybe, if we could separate that in the future.
Well, we did. We did. I mean, we did an introduction and then we, I mean, it's the same page, but it's.
It's the same, it's the same agenda item, but we're kind of acting two different ways. Adopting ordinance and introducing, so.
Mayor and Council, part of that's just the function of, these were introduced together at one point, so they're coming back as a group. It's just there were a particular set that changed more than what you felt comfortable simply doing an administrative change and allowing them to be adopted. So because they were together to begin with, we thought it was appropriate to bring them back together as a package. This is pretty rare.
Okay, I haven't.
Just the fact it happened twice in one meeting.
It just shows we're paying attention.
I haven't never noticed it happen before, so.
Yeah, I didn't know that it has.
All right.
I don't know that it has.
Fair enough.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and that motion carries. Item seven is to consider Resolutions 25-124 and 25-125 for the, for the 2025-2 Appealed Assessment Levy. Mr. Stemwell will.
Mayor and Council, I can handle this one quickly.
I didn't even notice that chair was empty until I looked at it.
I told Ms. Hanson she didn't have to stick around for this item.
Perfect.
Pretty straightforward. We had three appeals that went before the Board of Adjustments. Here recently, you see their recommendations to council. The affirmed one reduced another and removed the third one. To date, none of those fees have been paid, so the resolutions are accurate as stated in terms of the amounts that would be assessed. And I can try to answer any questions if you have any.
Very good. Any questions of Mr. Stemwell on this?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Butler?
I move we adopt Resolutions 25-124 and 25-125, adopting 2025 Sub-Two Miscellaneous Special Assessments, contested miscellaneous assessments, one year and three years.
Second.
Motion by Butler and a second by Carlson. Is there discussion on this?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Grisgoviac?
I'm sorry.
Councilmember Geisler? Get that G going.
The others. Uh, just a clarification to the, so the additional $40 is our standard assessment fee when we do that. Is that part of our regular fee schedule?
Correct.
As well?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Motion and a second. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. Item eight is to consider a joint powers agreement for signal reconstruction and ADA improvements on County-State Aid Highway 11, which is Northdale Boulevard at Raven Street, which would be right next to the Coon Rapids High School. Mr. Hammer?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Anoka County is planning a signal upgrade in this intersection for next summer. It would occur outside of school hour, so during the summer months. A portion of Raven just south of there would need to be closed. There's, there's certainly ways to work around it. It's just all time and money. And so because we're lining it up on that schedule, we believe we can get that done before. It just makes construction that much easier. Primarily, the work is just the signal upgrades, some ADA enhancements around those signals. They are adding some additional signage on that westbound leg and increasing the, the striping on that, because there's that lane drop there where there's the merging and maneuvering of vehicles. So we're trying to be a little more prominent with some of those advanced signs. They're also going to realign some of the electrical for the recent Safe Route to School project that's in there with the flashing in advance. So it's, it's all being wrapped up into this project. The city's responsible for about a third of the costs. We did budget for it in the 26 budget, and it's also state aid eligible expense if we choose that route as well. So I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
If they could clear that up, that would really make that a lot, a lot better to go through there. Half the time you're going, is that car going to come in on me? Because all of a sudden they're going to realize they're in a left turn lane?
Yep.
And yeah, half the time they do. All right. Any questions of Mr. Hammer on this?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler?
Uh, Mr. Hammer, you said that Raven would have to be closed. Would that be so you wouldn't be able to turn onto Raven from Northdale? Since there are summer activities going on at the high school.
Correct. You would not be able to go north on Raven to go either direction on Northdale, or would you be able to turn off of Northdale onto Raven?
So folks going into the high school or middle school would probably be best taking off Hanson there?
You'd come off of Hanson to, was it 115th, I believe?
Okay, thank you.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Novak?
I move we approve the joint powers agreement with Anoka County for the signal reconstruction and ADA improvements at Merkdale Boulevard, C S A H 11 at Raven Street.
Second.
Motion by Novak and a second by Butler. Is there further discussion on this? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. Item nine is to consider an introduction of ordinances amending Chapter 6-501, Non-Domestic Animals, repealing Chapter 6-700, Chickens, and amending 6-700, Domesticated Birds. Mr. Brody?
Yeah, well, this one, because Mr. Brown was on vacation, so. This is his memo, but I think I could summarize it fairly well. Now I know who's name to put on these things. This one we've discussed at a work session, and this is essentially expanding our current chicken ordinance. We'll repeal that and amend it to add domestic birds, so we're going to expand the definition. We did, while we did expand the definition, we've included ducks, quails, pigeons, and doves. We did not include geese or turkeys, based on our discussion with council at a work session. With that, the, the new code is similar to the old code with, but does sort of account now for these new species in terms of the numbers. We've now upped that to six. We've allowed for more structures and sizes depending on what kind of birds you have. The setbacks are similar to what we had with chickens. We did also have similar languages. We did 8-100 regarding slaughtering and processing restrictions. And you'll still continue to, we have to have a permit from the city in order to, to have these types of birds, and then violations will be processed the exact same way we had under the previous chicken ordinance. There's also one small minor change to our non-domestic animal ordinance, because we're expanding the ordinance of what's allowed here. We need to change that to reflect that. That's our non-domestic animal ordinance, which kind of lists all the things that you can't possess. So that's just kind of a housekeeping that matches with that. So tonight, we're just simply asking that you introduce both of those ordinances. We'll bring them back next time for adoption, and then we'd stand for questions, either myself or Mr. Brown.
Mr. Brody, that non-domestic animals, is that the one that also says what you can feed and what you can't feed in the town? Because I wonder if we've got something in there that, that we'll need to amend. Remember the one that caused all the problems however many years ago when?
I'm going to have to.
All the things you can't feed?
You guys want to discuss this ordinance amongst yourselves? I'll take a look at that.
Yeah, well.
But yes.
Yeah, and we'll just need to change it if we need to change it. We're not going to do anything tonight with it, but. Okay. Any questions of Mr. Brody on this?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler?
Uh, just, just a commentary of why are we doing this? You know, we've had various inquiries over time from citizens asking about other animals or birds that, that can be used to, you know, for eggs or whatnot. So that's, this is just kind of bringing us up to match what other peer cities have done to what they cover. We're, we're matching most of them for what they do. Some do a little bit more, but they tend to be a little bit more rural. Some do less, but this is really why it's in front of us, is because people are asking for it, so.
And to be clear, still no roosters.
Still no roosters.
If there's no further questions, we will consider the ordinances amending Chapters 6-501, Non-Domestic Animals, repealing Chapter 6-700, Chickens, and amending 6-700, Domesticated Birds, introduced. All right. We are up to the open mic public comment portion of the meeting. Anybody here for open mic this evening? No, all right. I don't have any reports on previous open mics, and we are to other business.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Novak?
Um, I've had a couple of people ask me about why we would abstain from things. And I just want to mention that's mainly because I've missed a couple of meetings, or when a council member misses a meeting that they can't comment on, they're not allowed to vote yes or no. They must abstain. And along that vote, or along that vein, I should say, I do want to thank all of the good doctors and nurses over at Mercy Hospital. They are incredible over there, and that's where I have been the last couple of times I've missed. And I want to encourage everybody out there who might be listening to this, who has diabetes, to take care of yourself. Keep pricking your finger. Pay attention to your blood sugars. I was stupid, and that's why I ended up in the hospital. So again, please, take care of yourselves out there. Get a monitor if you have to, but be very careful so that you don't have to go visit the lovely people over at Mercy Hospital.
That almost sounded like a mom warning, you know?
Don't be stupid or you'll end up in the hospital. It's a dad warning. I just got to give one of my daughters away, so I can do this.
Okay, other business. Uh, we have, how many days left? What's the date today? Today is the 18th. We have until the 21st to collect food here. So it would be very appreciative if you drop off any of your food donations here at City Hall for the ACBC Food Shelf. Not only is it really needed, it would help us with a little competition with Anoka, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler?
Uh, I, I actually had a chance to go tour ACBC earlier this week, and they said they're estimating close to 28,000 visits this year. That's up from about 8,000, five, six years ago. So they are experiencing a lot of demand and a lot of need. They're running a really good shop over there, and they're doing a lot of good in the community, but there's, there's a lot of folks that are using them and using them for support, so. Uh, if, if not to this food drive, a food drive please somewhere, but you know, we, we would like to win against Anoka, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Butler?
I, I'd like to note too, I, I also got to tour ACBC about a week and a half ago, and one of the things that I thought was really striking is they mentioned that according to their data, the plurality of people who go there are Coon Rapids residents. They're, they're technically in Anoka, but they said it's mostly Coon Rapids and Anoka who's there. If you can't donate food, they're very happy to take cash. They get a discount to purchase directly from grocers, so in case you don't have some extra food lying around, you can also just do a cash donation. And again, it's all very helpful for a good cause right before the holidays.
I would be willing to bet cash would be preferred.
In some ways, yeah. They, they were really full when I visited, and they were talking about just like, where do you store? do you store some of this, just because of the generosity of, you know, Coon Rapids residents and other residents, of course, in the other cities.
Yeah. All right. Other business. We are getting ready for the tree lighting. That'll be out on December 13th?
13th.
13th?
The flyers should be out to the kiddles this week.
Yep. Okay, all right. Perfect. Hitting the schools. The tree was placed today, so we'll be getting lights on there in the next couple weeks, and it'll be all ready for the event on Saturday, December 13th. We've got one more council meeting before that, and we can give you more details then. But get it in your calendar.